To the July 11th, 2017 Parish Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, would you all please stand as Coach Williams says the invocation and pleasure allegiance.
Dear Almighty, we thank you for allowing us to see another blessed day. Thank you for the rain and the sunshine. Bless you for giving us our sins and our shortcomings and make us fit. We thank you for your suffering, your dying, shedding blood for the nation of sin. On the third day you rose, all powers in your hand, we just thank you. And we pray for all of those who suffer throughout this land today, Lord. You know what their needs are, and we ask best them as well. We ask a special blessing upon this staff, also upon this board that you give us a sense of direction. We pray for those who come tonight seeking our help. Let the Holy Spirit guide and lead us, and we do that with His cleavage in our sight. This is where all of this day is our prayer, in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where nothing is just as wrong.
Ms. Christie, would you please call the roll?
Chair Jake Porche.
Here.
Vice Chair Art Little.
Here.
Mr. Randy Ormitor.
Here.
Ms. Betty Brown. Ms. Latricia Cobb. Ms. Julia Dickerson.
Here.
Ms. Sharon Galatia.
Here.
Mr. Kyle Link.
Here.
Mr. Gary Navarre.
Here.
Mr. Kirk Smith.
Here.
And Mr. LaSalle Wayans.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Christie. This is an 11-member board. It will take a majority of those members present to grant or deny any requests heard tonight. The chair will refrain from voting unless that vote might affect the outcome. The meeting will be conducted with me reading the requests from the agenda. The planning staff will give a presentation and report their recommendations. If the applicant would like to add to the staff's presentation, or if someone from the audience has comments, please come to the microphone and state your name, address, and the nature of your request. All persons wishing to speak other than the applicants need to fill out a blue Request to Appear Form located in the back of this room. The form must be given to a staff member prior to the reading of the agenda item. As required by this board's bylaws, in all cases, the proponents will be limited to 10 minutes. Opponents will be granted 10 minutes as well, with each speaker allowed no more than three minutes. I recommend that a spokesperson be selected if there is a large group wanting to speak on the same agenda item. If four or more speaker request forms are submitted, the time allowed for individual speakers will be limited based upon the number of forms submitted. The chair has the right to limit speakers who present redundant information or personal attacks. In unique situations, the chair may extend, or the board may vote to extend, the time allotted for speakers. After discussion, the board will vote on each request. I will announce the decision of the board after the vote. The zoning variance is final tonight. The road abandonment and rezoning cases will go before the police jury for final action on July 13th, 2017 at 5:30 PM. This meeting is being taped by the Calhoun Parish Government Channel and can be viewed on Wednesday and Thursday following the meeting. For additional run dates, check the website at www.cppj.net. Channel 5 in Lake Charles, Sulphur, Moss Bluff, Westlake, Vinton, Dequincy, and Gillis; Channel 99 in Carless and Grand Lake. At this time, I would ask that everyone please turn off all electronic devices and cellphones or any noise makers. Moving to Item 5 on the agenda. Take appropriate action on case SUB-06-17-0074, a request by Baggett Investors LLC for preliminary subdivision approval to allow a single-family residential development, 95 lots, in Bowknot Farms subdivision in the 6,500 block of Elliott Road in Ward 3. They have asked for a deferral, and I will entertain a motion to defer for 30 days.
So moved.
I need a second. We've got a motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Link. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is deferred. Item 6. Motion passes, I'm sorry, Item 5 is deferred. Item 6. Take appropriate action on case VAR-06-17-0009, a request by Baggett Investors LLC for a variance to decrease the lot size requirement. Requires 7,500 square feet, requesting 7,200 square feet in the 6,500 block of Elliott Road in Ward 3. I will also entertain a motion to defer for 30 days on Item 6.
So moved.
Motion by Coach Williams and a second by Ms. Cobb. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 6 is deferred. Item 7. Take appropriate action on case AB-05-17-0002, a request by Gerald Lewis to abandon and revoke the original dedication of the east 19.3 feet of Ryan Lane in Ward 3. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This road is located in South Lake Charles. When the road was constructed, it was not constructed exactly on the right-of-way as dedicated. The petitioner would like to have the unconstructed portion abandoned to allow him to have more land available for development. And if you take a look at, I'm sorry, there you go, Tammy, thank you. If you take a look at this drawing that's on the screen, you can kind of see the hatched area is the 19.3 feet that we're talking about. And the yellow highlighted area is where the road was actually constructed. Because the road was not constructed on this portion of the dedicated right-of-way, the staff recommends that their request be granted.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wallace. If the applicant is present and you would like to add to the staff's presentation, you may come to the podium at this time. Okay? Present would not like to speak. Any questions or comments by the board? Mr. Little.
The abandonment is going to go back to each one of these property owners? Is that what happens?
State law actually dictates how it's done.
That's good.
And it should go to these property owners and the others to the south.
Thank you.
We do not have any blue cards in opposition. Do we have any written opposition?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments by the board? Seeing no opposition, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 7 passes. Item 8. Take appropriate action on case VAR-05-17, I'm sorry, 0517-0008, a request by Gerald Lewis for a variance to decrease the front yard setback requirement. Allows 20 feet, he's requesting 11 feet at 5029 Ryan Lane in Ward 3. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This property is also located in South Lake Charles and abuts the road in the previous agenda item. The 1.34 acres of land was rezoned to multifamily residential last year, and the petitioners are requesting a variance on the front setback for the proposed 20-unit development. Because the proposed setback is consistent with others in the area, and because of the need for a vehicular turnaround, the staff recommends that their request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhere to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments; that the development adhere to stormwater best management practices; that a drainage impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waiver is granted by the Division of Engineering; that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward toward the development; and that screening must be provided in accordance with Section 2650 of the Parish Code.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. If the applicant is present and you would like to speak on your behalf, you may come to the podium at this time. Any questions or comments by the board? Do we have any written opposition?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No blue cards? Seeing no opposition, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 8 passes. Item 9. Take appropriate action on case RZ-0517-0009, a request by AMEC LLC to rezone from light industrial to recreational vehicle park to allow recreational vehicle park 27 spaces at 2470 Toomey Road in Ward 7. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This property is located in the Toomey area and is adjacent for land, adjacent to land previously rezoned for this same purpose. At this time, the petitioner would like to rezone an additional 2.3 acres of his land to allow up to 27 RV spaces in this expansion. The roads within the park will be hard-surfaced, and this portion of the development will include a dog park. Because the development is consistent with the area, the staff recommends that their request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhere to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments; that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward toward the development; that RV park model types are prohibited; that screening must be provided in accordance with Section 2650 of the Parish Code; and that a drainage impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waiver is granted by Division of Engineering.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. If the applicant is present and would like to speak on your behalf, you may come to the podium at this time. Any questions or comments by the board? Do we have any written opposition?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No blue cards? Seeing no opposition, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 9 passes. Item 10. Take appropriate action on case RZ-0617-0010, a request by George Clyde to rezone from single-family residential and manufactured home park to recreational vehicle park to allow recreational vehicle park 87 spaces, I'm sorry, 85 spaces at 4,400 Highway 27 South in Ward 4. I will entertain a motion for approval with the stipulations.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace.
This property is in the Carless area and encompasses nearly eight acres. If approved, the petitioner's plan to sell the land to a developer who will construct the park, and the park will have hard-surfaced roads. Excuse me. Because the development is consistent with the area, the staff recommends that their request be granted with the following stipulations: that the development adhere to the site plan on file, provided that the director may authorize adjustments; that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward; that RV park model types are prohibited; that screening must be provided in accordance with Section 2650 of the code; that a drainage impact analysis will be required unless appropriate waiver is granted; and that permitting is subject to approval of the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development and Gravity Drainage District Number 5 of Ward 4.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. If the applicant would like to speak, you may come to the podium at this time. Any questions or comments by the board? Do we have any written opposition to this item?
No, sir.
Okay. No blue cards? Seeing no opposition, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 10 passes. Item 11. Take appropriate action on a request by the Calhoun Parish Division of Planning and Development on proposed amendments to Chapter 26 of the Calhoun Parish Code of Ordinances, specifically Division 5 Corridor Overlay District. I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Link. Ms. Wallace, do you have anything to add?
I actually prepared a PowerPoint just in case if there were any questions. But just to quickly refresh everyone's memory, the police jury passed these standards back in 2014. And since that time, the police jurors have been approached by some citizens who would like to see more flexibility in the ordinance. So this was basically prepared in response to those citizens. There have been a number of businesses that have opened in Ward 1 since implementation in 2014. But there have been a couple instances where there have been alternative requests, and that leads us to these requests for flexible regulations. But again, if you have any questions, you can let me know. This has been on the website since the day after it was presented to you, which was June 20th. We've received one comment, and it was actually a comment in support of the changes from the Ward 1 Economic Development Board. But other than that, we haven't received any comments, suggestions, opposition.
Okay.
Nothing.
Are there any questions or comments by the board? We do have one blue card. Mr. Scott Bailey?
Well, Mr. Bailey is coming up. If I could very quickly, Mr. Chair. I neglected to let you all know that Mr. Kevin White, one of the police jurors for that area, he had planned to be here tonight, but due to being out of town for work, he was unable to be here. And he has also asked that we extend the time for public comment, which would mean that the police jury would not take action on this until August 24th.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Mr. Bailey?
Well, if there's no opposition, then I probably don't need to speak, huh? Well, I'll just, I'll just say then, I thank you all for-
Your name and address.
Yeah. Scott Bailey. 3847 Cypress Lake Drive. Three minutes? All right. Thank you all for having the courage to pass it the first time. I know it's, leadership's not always popular or fun, and it can be difficult. But thank you for having us some vision for the future. I believe as the years go by, I believe that the years will prove that this was a good decision. And the benefits will become evident in Moss Bluff as it develops in an orderly fashion and actually is an attractive community to live in. So, thank you for passing it. I am familiar with the changes somewhat. I only have one question, Weston, you may be able to answer me on this. For the billboards that are allowed over 2,000 feet, do we have it written in a way that they can't put double, or triple, or four boards at a time?
Yes, that's already in the ordinance.
Okay.
It's already stated.
That's the only question I had.
Can't have piggyback types.
Any questions for Mr. Bailey? Thank you, sir. Any other comments, Ms. Wallace?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by the board? All right, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 11 passes. Item 12. Receive report from staff regarding proposed amendments to drainage standards. I will entertain a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Link. And I will now turn this to Mr. Crane.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just want to introduce Mr. Alan Wainwright. Alan is the Director of Public Works for the Police Jury, and he has been the point person for this particular initiative. And I can tell you that Alan has put in a tremendous amount of time into this, this project. This has been going on for several years now that the Police Jury and Drainage Committee has been looking into this. Collectively, as a staff, we have met on this and interjected. We've had public comment about this. And so, the reason this is before you tonight is because the drainage section of the ordinance is in Chapter 26. And that's the chapter that deals with zoning and development. And so, it must come through the Planning and Zoning Board for a recommendation. But tonight is for Alan to give that report. There's no action, we're not asking for any action tonight, but for him to give a report, and then there'll be any public comment after that. So, without further ado, Mr. Alan Wainwright.
Chairman and the rest of the board, before I get started in the presentation, I wanted to first say, believe it or not, after 20 years at the Police Jury, my first planning and zoning meeting. And I really want to take time to thank you all for the service and all the others before, because we're going to talk about ordinances a lot tonight and growth and development. I think this board plays a very critical part in that entire process. And, you know, I know there's a lot of tough decisions. And it's really an honor to be able to present to you all tonight. And again, thank you for the services you've done. So unfortunately, it's going to take a little while to get through this PowerPoint. We won't get home early, but I'll try and go as fast as I can. This initiative was started in 2014. It would progress to date, there's a lot to cover. And this was really, maybe you've been able to see some of the, re-watch some of the previous meetings at the Police Jury level, or pick up or be at any, some other forum. But, you know, this is really the first time we get to present this information in detail to you guys. And I may take a little extra time simply to be thorough and try and, you know, make sure you, at the end, we have plenty of time though to answer as many questions you may have, because we really want there to be a thorough review of this, obviously, before we go any further. So, title of this overall initiative is really Drainage Designed to Make Sense. We're going to be reviewing Chapter 26 Ordinance Changes. And I'll just get right into it. This slide is really designed, we've used it in a number of these presentations, to really highlight or try to explain all the various aspects that are going on in terms of the overall drainage management program. And depending on who you are and where your problem is and what your needs are, you really have a tendency to focus on one aspect of this or another. It may be a project that you need done to help flooding in your area. It may be a new development next door to your, to your area that, you know, so depending on your situation, you may be more interested in different aspects of this, the entire program, depending on who you are. What we, what the Police Jury passed early on though was basically a three-pronged approach. The top-level approach is to form a drainage coalition, which is really, for the first time, a formal structure where the Gravity Drainage Boards, the various municipalities, and us, the parish, we get together and we meet to really work on all the drainage initiatives as one. And those have been some very productive meetings. So, there's quarterly meetings held, and then after major rain events. And on an as-needed basis, those meetings take place where we basically work on the various issues for drainage, overall drainage maintenance. Under that, policies and ordinances are a major section of the program. Early on, we knew we needed to take a good look at the Development Code and basically bring it up to date and put it in a position where it can handle the pace of growth and development that we are obviously experiencing today. And then probably the most important part to most folks is the Capital Improvement Program. I've made the comments and the statements. You know, I think basically overall drainage projects have been generally underfunded over the years. There needs to be more funding in that direction. There needs to be a program that systematically puts good drainage projects in the ground to improve the way we can get water out and the way we can, the way we can manage our water. So really, there's teamwork, there's good policy, and there's good projects. It comes together really to make the entire strategy come together and hopefully work. So, another way to look at this, is sort of a new slide for this presentation, is, again, sort of same, similar, similar approach. When it comes to a well-integrated watershed management program, it's just a lot of components. And you could probably go around this slide and just continue to add components. Again, most, most people are very interested in one piece of this. Tonight, we're focused on the development standards, and we'll get into that, like I say, in detail. So, we've been, just to kind of give you a sense for how much public outreach and engagement has gone on. We're kind of reaching the, I guess, the third quarter of this entire effort. We've been at it for quite some time. The first stages of the first quarter was really to get a firm idea of the problems and bring in as many stakeholders as possible to get an assessment of the current ordinances and to get some early feedback. And really, all of that was designed to develop the draft ordinance changes that are available now. We had public open houses and went to Sulphur, Lake Charles, Moss Bluff, well-attended. Again, the crowds at those events varied. There was, there's people from, some that needed a project near their house, and some that are very interested in how things were growing and developing. We've had the coalition meetings, I mentioned there. And then more recently, the last couple bullets on this slide refer to the public comment period. In, in May began a more formal public comment period where the actual draft ordinances were presented to some stakeholder groups and really circulated. The comment period began, it has run officially into June. And really, it's still, it's still ongoing, because in the month of June, we've had two Police Jury parish-wide drainage committee meetings, which have been very well-attended, a lot of good questions. And in both those cases, everything was there to refer to the draft ordinances that are posted on the, on the website and, you know, been available to the public to review. So, we continue the comment period. We continue to make tweaks and adjustments to the ordinances as we find relevant comments and things. I mean, every day goes by, someone points out something that you can explain better or maybe a change is needed. So, you can learn from everyone. We've taken that approach. Every comment has, has its value. So, it has continued to tweak. The version that you've been given will most likely not be the final version, because like I say, every day goes by, we, we continue to try and make that document work better if it gets, you know, should it get passed. This is just another way of saying the same thing, just give you some dates on how some of that has unfolded. But I won't, I won't go through this slide in detail. The key thing there is, again, in June, we have had two Police Jury Drainage Committee meetings. And we'll be going back through that committee as we progress through the final stages of this. And I have some slides that sort of depict that. So, to get into the details of the ordinance changes. First off, in 2015, I think it was, might have been early 2016, one of the first things we asked the Police Jury to do was to pass, and Sam, if I can borrow you, never mind. My first things back in early 2015, we asked the Police Jury to pass a very simple statement, a mission statement, guiding principles, and objectives. Turned, it was put together in this little brochure. I think you have one. And we really have leaned on this thing ever since. Turned out to be a really wise decision to, to prepare this. And something that the Police Jury adopted early on. And so, everything has moved forward off of this document. So, in 2015, early 2015, this was passed. Then, the next thing that was passed by the Police Jury was an approval of some policy framework. And the reason why we did that was, is you go off into Chapter 26 and you start modifying it, you need a, you need a real framework or boundaries to work between and a guiding light to how, the changes you're going to make. The slide that's on the screen really reflects the top three parts of the formal document that was passed that night. That was in 2016. And there are key things, because everything in the ordinance builds out under this. Number one is for, and we're talking about all new development. Noticed tonight earlier on your agenda, you had all kinds. You got subdivisions, you got re-sub, you got, so there's all kinds of development. When we're talking about development in all of this, we're not just talking about subdivision development. We're talking about all forms of development. As you get into the details of the ordinance, it definitely divides it up. And there's, there's regulations for all, all the different versions. But overall, the policy framework is for all development. To maintain or lower the existing water surface elevation profiles and receiving streams. To expel, I have a slide after this sort of expounds on that. To protect and enhance the flood storage volumes within the established 100-year floodplain. And for all new structures to follow the minimum freeboard requirements. At the end of the day, when it comes to new development, if we can accomplish these three things, then we would consider a new development to be somewhat neutral to the watershed and really have very little impact. It's a challenge to do all these things on every site, but that's, that's really the goal and the standard that has been established in the rewrite. To go into more detail of what those mean, the first one really means, and was, like I say, on the document that was actually passed, kind of went into more detail as well. But first one means zero increase in peak runoff rate for each outfall of a new development. So, as you develop a new site and you have all the new impervious area coming in, basically, your design requirements will be the no new runoff, no additional to the peak. And that will meet what we consider the spectrum of storms, design storms, which is a two-year, five-year, 10-year, and 25-year storm. So, from a runoff, rainwater runoff standpoint, that would make that site about as neutral as we can make it, if you accomplish that. Second one. No net loss in floodplain storage. How do you do that, is really what's, what's in this statement? You compare a pre-imposed development-stage storage relationship. It's basically a graph or a curve that gets developed, and you make sure those things match. What that is saying is, you can move the dirt around on a site, but at the end of the day, if it's in a floodplain, and our goal is to preserve the volume of the floodplain, that there be no net difference or change in the floodplain from a volume standpoint. So, you can shift it around, you can alter it, but we need to have a result that ends up having the same amount of storage as before you started. So that in essence, or in theory, that storage of that water is not shifted to some property downstream. Or the need for that storage of that water that was going on, not shifted downstream. Number three is developments that would be in no impact to our floodways. Floodways are a very specific piece of the floodplain maps, and- and they're ultimately the most critical part of the lateral drainage system. This is where the bulk of the water is carried and really the goal is to really limit how much impact you can have in there. So, FEMA has a formal process for that. It's called a no-rise certification where if you're in, you happen to be trying to develop something in this area, in these defined areas, then you have to meet that level of design and criteria, which basically is, again, trying to assure that your development is not going to have a negative impact both upstream and downstream. And, you know, tonight on many of your agenda items, you passed the stipulation that a drainage impact study be done. I mean, that's really what that's all about, is trying to get to that goal of having a development that gets put in but doesn't have the negative impact. And the last one is really just an expansion of an existing policy. For several years now, we've had what's called the freeboard requirement for new structures and it applies to those sites that are in the floodplain, in the floodplanes where there's flood elevations established. And you're required to build one foot above it. And that was an excellent move. What we have become, what we understand though now and really what we should have passed in the beginning was that it really apply parish-wide. Reason for that is really twofold. So many of the structures that end up being repeat flooded structures out there. They're nowhere near a flood zone, first thing. So, repetitive loss or any flooding can happen anywhere, generally due to some form of flash flooding in that case. The actual hundred-year flood, which is the floodplain designation, is a rarer event. But the flash flood event, as y'all know, we seem to have one of those every day. You know, that's what, when you expand it parish-wide and you really, you're protecting homes against flooding and flash flood situations. Why would they flood in a flash flood situation? Really, there's two main causes. Number one, they're built below the street elevation out front. So, if something happens in the culvert system, maybe something plugs or just gets overwhelmed for that rain event, that street becomes the barrier that may ultimately flood their home. So, really, that doesn't matter where you're at in a flood zone. If there's rain and there's drainage, you need to be above the street. So, it's that principle of expanding it parish-wide that is really all you do and taking a very good ordinance and expanding it to all new structures. There's a couple other things in there. For one, if there's a sewer system in your neighborhood, that you build a foot above that sewer system. Again, if there's a sewer system and it's not in the floodplain, the reason why you have that is if a sewer system fails, it breaks, it plugs, sewer's going to back up out of that system. So, your home needs to be a foot above that so that if there is a failure, any backflows will be on the ground, not in a home. So, that doesn't, that's not tied to floodplain. That's anywhere that there's a sewer system and it might be a failure. So, basically, expanding this to parish-wide just as a insurance policy for all structures that, under certain circumstances, they'll have the best chance of not flooding in a critical event. So, these performance standards, as it referred to in the ordinance, are really what, in detail, the ordinances try to write out in quite a bit of detail. If you've looked at chapter 26, you know, it's a 200-page chapter and we probably have 50 pages that are impacted in that chapter trying to accomplish these performance standards. This slide really highlights the changed articles in the chapter against 200-page, chapter has 10 articles, really five of them have changes. So, you don't need to read them all, you're more than welcome to, but really, these are the articles that have changes. And by and large, the significant changes are in Article 7, which are the technical design standards. Because we have had things like detention and we have had things like field mitigation in our ordinances, but we're changing the technical aspects of that so that it's done in a fashion that is suitable for the performance that we're after. So, this slide sort of highlights some next level down key changes in the ordinances. And some of these, you may have seen more in y'all's role as planning and zoning. Some of these maybe you haven't seen, so I'll go through them. The preliminary development conceptual plans. There's actually language in there now that requires it then sort of makes it maybe a should-do thing, a recommended. So, we're taking out that it's recommended and leaving it as a required step in the process. We feel like the conceptual plan is the entry-level investment into a particular project in terms of the engineering work and the design work. It's the base level of getting a concept drawn out, sketched out and coming to the police jury offices and having that first meeting with this staff and our staff and those that are going to review this development and really have a good conversation over the things that will be needed in this subdivision or this development and the things that may not be, the important things. As y'all have seen in many of your cases, there's always that one or two things that are critical to this development. Well, after years of seeing it, you know, our staff is very adept that it'd be a great time to pass that on to potential developers so that they understand the hurdles that they're going to be needing to deal with as they go through the rest of the process. We believe it's just a good get-off-the-ground meeting with very little investment in terms of the actual plans that may sway people's decisions to go forward one way or another, either give them confidence or decide to change their ideas if they go through that step. The required runoff management plan is a renaming of the drainage impact analysis. And we're very familiar with the drainage impact analysis, heard it on a number of your items tonight. Why would you rename it? Well, the key thing for renaming it is to create, number one, a new idea about what that study is all about. The drainage impact analysis, if you look at it in detail, has generally been a study that takes the approach of study your development and tell me how it's relatively insignificant to the rest of the watershed and how you're not really a critical impact to the watershed. And in that process, we have had the requirement, some people have not been able to meet that standard and they've been, basically have decided to put detention ponds on their developments. The new mindset behind the runoff management plan is a little bit different. It takes more of an approach of, we know you're having a development, we know you're adding impervious surfaces in this, we know you're going to create existing, you know, new runoff. Show us how you're going to manage it on your site so that it's neutral to the rest of the community or rest of the watershed. So, it's really a difference in approach because if you go back through and look at most of the drainage impact analysis, when you look at one site, one small two-acre site relative to an entire watershed, it may have thousands of acres in it, it really becomes mathematically insignificant. But what we're seeing, the reason why flash flooding is growing and growing and growing is because the net cumulative effect of all the little one sites that are relatively insignificant in the big scheme of things add up. We've been at this policy for over 10 years, right at 10 years now. And that's the main thing we've learned, is that cumulative net effect of growth and development. No one site should be blamed for the entire problem, it's the cumulative net that adds up. So, that's the reason why you change your mindset, because it really is engineering and mathematically fairly easy to show that one site is insignificant. And so, that's the reason for the change and, you know, you can go into great detail on that. Drainage impact fees has been a very, a part of the change that has gotten a lot of questions. Why do you need that? Why is it important? Well, basically, the way the ordinances are set up is if you are required to do a runoff management plan and it's going to, you're ultimately going to decide that you need to do some form of on-site detention to mitigate your site. Well, that actually works pretty well for bigger sites. Two acres on up for us is what we're calling bigger sites at this point. When you get down to the smaller sites, it gets awful hard and uneconomical to put that detention on-site. The runoff increase still happens, but to build a pond and a business or whatever you want on that site, it gets awful hard to do that. So, we want to give all of those sites a waiver or an exemption from doing the study. We want them to just pay the impact fee and the impact fees be used to go build regional detention ponds around the watersheds to help offset that piece of growth and development. A key ingredient in this, in this work, this will work, at least mathematically, for the unincorporated areas of Calcasieu Parish because of a couple reasons. Number one, we only have so many existing small lots out there. This would basically refer to existing lots. Well, when you run the numbers on how many lots are out there, by and large, you know, somewhere less than 10% of unincorporated area at Calcasieu Parish is in lots that meet that description of less than two acres. We have a lot of large tracts in the unincorporated area. So, first off, it's a small amount of tracts. And second is, they're all dispersed throughout the parish, so they're not in one big spot. Well, if you move inside the cities, that's a totally different scenario. Almost every track inside the city limits of any of the municipalities is under that two-acre threshold. So, they're not going to be able to have the same strategy as the unincorporated area. But for the parish, this strategy can have, can be, can make it more feasible for the smaller tracts, but yet have the method or at least a way on the backside to mitigate that runoff that is going to happen from the development. So, that's the reason why you have an impact fee, it's an alternative or it's in lieu of on-site detention. So, no one should have to do both. You're trying to get a decision-making tree that works either or. You do it on-site yourself at whatever cost that is or you pay the fee. So, at this point, the fee has been put out as the first estimate of 22 cents per square foot, just in case you ask, for impervious area created on your site. So, you know, it's easy enough to do the math on a 3,000-square-foot home or something like that and see what type, size fee you're talking about. It is a significant amount, but compared to doing on-site detention, it's relatively small. The reason why you can do it that way is because basically you're joining the, into a regional system and the buying power of a regional system. That's why you can, we can afford to have the fee at that rate. Next one is detention and field mitigation standards. Everything that relates to detention, to field, we really just covered detention. Detention is all about runoff. But everything that relates to field mitigation is attempting to balance the storage that's in our watersheds in the form of floodplain storage. So, field mitigation is a technical way that you, the process that you go through of analyzing the dirt or the dirt work that's going to be done on that site and balancing it out. So, the pre and post, there is a net no-loss of floodplain storage. So, that's where those, everything you see referring to field mitigation is in that area. Rightaways, rightaway requirements, of course, we've had rightaway requirements for many years at the request of the Gravity Drainage Districts through the coalition meetings. These requirements are being raised, a little bit more rightaway, all in an effort to make it, just make the gravity drainage system more sustainable, to have enough rightaway to do the work that they need to do to keep the ditches open and flowing. Required drainage layout and grading plans. After a project moves from y'all's stage of development, y'all's step, it goes through engineering plans and it goes through detailed plans. This is really adding a critical component to the engineering plans, a formal drainage layout that really describes how that site is going to be built. We have some aspects of that now, but this is sort of improving how the drainage design is done inside the engineering plans and developing a grading plan. And the key to this is that especially new subdivisions would be built to these plans at the time of construction. And that's different than now. Right now, the plans may be drawn up and there's a, really a formal drainage pattern that's designed for that subdivision. But when they build it, they come and they build the roads and they put the corner markers in for the lots and they do the detention pond, they put the drain ditches in. But nobody really grades all the lots. And that lot grading, at the lot level, that grading and reshaping of the development is left to the individual homeowner. And if there's 200 homes in the subdivision, that means you've got to get that grading pattern right 200 times. It's proven to be a challenge to keep all that working as developments or subdivisions develop over many, many years. And we have a very common problem of the first home in there can very much, oftentimes, end up being the lowest home in there. And he ends up being the person that sees flooding. So, one way that you deal with that, you know, the communities is pre-build these subdivisions to where, in essence, there's no need to come in and do all the dirt work, one home at a time later. And in essence, the builders of the homes will come in and basically improve their dirt, but there'll be farm boards on the ready-made ground to go build to so that you're trying to move the grading work, the substantial grading work that is critical to the front end of the project versus the back end when it's got to be done right and checked so many different times. So, that's the reason for that. Next bullet is work starting ahead of plans. As you know, it's just common practice and so much of the work out on a site can be pre-done even over years before you might even see it as part of your permitting process. So, really, we would like to get the system improved to where we have good plans and approval for the project before we see a lot of earthwork and dirtwork going on so that we're not behind the curve before we even see the engineering studies. And so, you see those two components obviously work together. If you're going to go through all this design and trying to maintain a limited amount of what I kind of call interim construction impact, which that time from the day someone starts clearing a lot to the day that all the features are in it that are there to mitigate it until they're built, there's an interim time, there's an amount of time there where if you happen to be the neighbor that's downstream, you may be feeling the results of that interim impact. So, the reason why you do that, again, is so that you get all the permitting, you get all the design done before you get too far into the project. Last bullet on here, construction phasing, field inspections and as-built drawings are really obvious things to trying to make the entire process work so that we can have a end result that is a good quality project. The public infrastructure that gets put in the ground is something that doesn't have to be reconstructed sooner rather than later. And then, as-built plans are really there to try and resolve future conflicts. There's a final plat now that is often used to resolve, you know, conflicts in the future, property boundaries, this, that and the next. There's no document there to really get filed at the courthouse to use to resolve drainage problems. So, by filing a as-built drainage plan, so that once the subdivision's built, you get an as-built drawing, you file that just like a final plat, now you have a legal document that can actually be used to resolve things that come up. So, let me move on. That was by far the most intense slide, so hopefully we can move on a little faster than that one. Stakeholder feedback. Like I said, we have had quite a period of feedback and a lot of feedback. So, I'm pointing in the wrong direction or it's, it may be fixing to start jumping through slides. Okay, there we go. We have had a lot of feedback. This has been by far one of the most intense ordinance changes, rightfully so. It's a critical component of what goes on out there in the development world and all the growth and development. It's a significant change of ordinances, so there has been a lot of effort put into this aspect of it to receive feedback. And so, this slide sort of alludes to that. And really like the last bullet says here, we have taken every comment, we have And really like the last bullet says here, we have taken every comment, we have received it, we have pondered it, we have wondered if we can make an improvement, we have tried to justify it or not, we have gone through everything we can to give every comment due process in terms of considering it so that ultimately the final product is as good as we can get. So, you know, that's what we, that's what that's highlighting. You have some, some of the things that I think you've been given or copies of some question and answers that, that really we think, again, we didn't necessarily change our mind with every comment, but we definitely considered them all. So, we've had an intense amount of feedback. This, there's actually three slides here that really illustrate the type of questions that we've received throughout this process. And so, I won't go through all of them. Basically, at the end of the day, the people who are watching this and studying it and trying to understand how the impact this is going to have and trying to participate have asked all the good questions. They've asked about all the major subjects. They've really taken the time to understand the changes. So, you have a set of question and answers that sort of mimic this, that you can read some of the, the staff-level answers to the, to these type questions that, that will help you understand why we need things like field mitigation, why are there free board requirements? And I've gone into some of these tonight. What's important about, what's the difference in a runoff management plan? So, I've tried to cover the big ones without going through these slides in detail. It's just, they're really here to highlight the fact that we have had good, critical questions asked about the entire changes and I think we have good answers for, for all of this. So, kind of progressing through the PowerPoint, kind of getting down to some of the last slides and into the, maybe we can have a few questions from y'all. The focus has and will continue to be, how do we reduce flooding through long-term policy measures? It is, you know, long-term policy is a critical component in winning at this game. How do we balance that with good science and engineering? And how do we do all this in a method that really is not stymie growth and development? Again, as I alluded to, the second bullet there, we have identified, will probably continue to identify areas in the language that's a little unclear, uncertain, and it will deserve revisions. We've done that and there, there'll be some more surely to come with this much. So, we have amended it, we have changed it, and we continue to work through the process. Next two slides, you have copies, so I won't go into detail on these, but these are some key sections where based off of the questions that were received, key changes were in fact actually made. So, just to, like I said, we don't need to go through all these unless you want to go back and ask a question on something in particular, but really it's just to illustrate that a lot of change has taken place from the draft and we feel like we are at a very good document. I think Hal alluded to in one of our meetings, you know, a document this significant, it won't be done. When we pass it, it won't be done. There'll be change, you're going to continue to learn how it works and functions in, as developments go through the pipeline, and there'll be inevitable, inevitably be things you probably want to tweak. It's been my experience with this much ordinance and this much change in this complex of a system, it's awful hard to think that the first draft of this is going to be the right draft. So, we welcome the changes and again, we've tried to make as many as we see feasible. So, to define the, the remaining steps and the next steps, obviously, we're here tonight presenting to you so that you can take it under advisement. There'll be an update to the police jury on Thursday night, July 13th. Again, that'll, that'll highlight some of the last rounds of changes that were made again and really field questions from them. You know, to date, we've really only met with the, the committee in a public setting in a public hearing, a lot like this, a lot like this one. So, that'll be the first chance really to have the entire police jury there and we'll field questions as needed. That, moving past Thursday night, we have a few more steps ultimately to where we'll, we need to get back to the drainage committee that has seen this now twice and get a recommendation from them. Same with y'all, we need to, we'll be back here. And then ultimately, final police jury approval. We've laid this out in a timeline for you, just to have a sense of where we're at in all these steps. And this timeline again goes back to steps now since 2014. We've been taking slowly but surely, but we're here on the 11th. We go to the police jury on 13th. We are anticipating going to the drainage committee on August 8th, anticipating coming back to this body on August 22nd. And then, if all goes well and we're still on track, then August 24th will be the earliest that the police jury would consider these ordinances for action. So, there's time left. We're still expecting, you know, comments and feedback as we, as we progress. So, just a reminder, the draft is on the website, the parish's website. There's two versions, there's the absolute full version, all 200 pages. There's also a subset of that which just basically is all the pages that changed. So, depending on how you want to look at it, you know, you're more welcome to choose. And that concludes the presentation, takes us off into questions if you have any, and I'll be glad to answer them. I don't know if Mr., yeah, Brian and Dana, let me, I'm sure y'all seen him come in, but you know, that Brian knows as much about this now as me, he's heard all the presentations, so we can ask him some questions if you'd like. Any questions? Mr. Navarre.
I live in Suffolk. By Uden Drainage Canal lives, is right behind my neighbor's house, across the street neighbor's house. Down the street, they were flooding. They tore out, tore two houses down and they built three houses now. They've hauled in dirt. I've never had water get close to my yard, but it's getting worse every, every time it rains. In the last three months, the house across the street has flooded four times. Now, it's, granted, his yard is way lower than my yard. And is there any way, instead of making them build up dirt, to put them on, put them on piers? You know, that, that would solve a lot of problems. I know a lot, maybe a lot of people wouldn't want to buy a house on piers, but they, they built them on piers for thousands of years.
So, unfortunately, you describe a very average case, unfortunately.
Yeah, I know.
Widespread issue, very common, a growing problem. You heard me say it earlier, it's that, you know, it really ain't those three homes for two for three there, three for two, but they had an incremental increase. And they're in that realm of very small developments that have really not, you know, it's kind of gotten a pass in terms of the drainage system, is that they're, they're small and they're relatively insignificant. Even if you'd done the drainage study, it would maybe show up as insignificant. So, the entire mindset of these ordinance changes is to try and avoid that situation inside the city limits of all, of your bigger municipalities, really all of them. Their challenge is significantly different than unincorporated Calquashew Parish because they're seeing what you just described as redevelopment of properties at a higher density. So, the runoff is definitely increasing off that site and then now with some of the other standards like free board requirements, they're bringing in more dirt than ever. So, you have to try and balance all that. And the answer to the final part of your question, is there another way? Absolutely. One of the parts of the ordinance that we're attempting to model in this and really will be reflected tomorrow night in some of the additional details is, you know, basically our runoff management plan tries to deal with larger lots, but there's your case which actually is a smaller lot. And so, one of the things we found was how do we manage what goes on on that smaller lot in terms of the dirt? Well, one of the things we're adding in there is new language, attempting to deal with that scenario, is one of the good models for who's dealing with that now is Ascension Parish, for instance. There's others that are doing this, but you know, we always kind of look over there, they've had so much growth and development, what are they doing to deal with that? So, one of the things they do in that scenario is they limit the amount of field that can go on that lot. First off, they don't try and make that person really mitigate it because there's no space on that small lot to mitigate it. So, they attempt to really limit it. What they'll typically do in, in areas is they'll limit the footprint of dirt that can be brought in, first off. And in Ascension Parish's version of it is, amount of dirt can be brought in is, can extend outside the footprint of the home 24 inches. And then, it slopes down to the grade at a reasonable slope, maybe something you can mow, something you can walk up, so six to one. What they do right now, we kind of have that version of an ordinance, but with a very small lot and multiple lots, in essence, that still allows them to fill the whole lot in. So, what they do, take further, the next step is they allow that field to only be brought up to a certain height, a maximum height. In their case, I think it's 24 inches or 36 inches, depending on where you're at. Then after that, you build that house on piers or piles or whatever it takes to get whatever remaining elevation you need. So, that they basically transition that foundation at home from a, a smaller dirt patch, so there's net, less water, less, less field put in, and they cap the height. And then, the only other step they really take is they don't allow you to put field all the way up to the property lines. They pull it back five or 10 foot or 50 foot, depending where you're at. So, in essence, they try to limit the amount of damage or the amount of impact that field's going to have, realizing that they, they don't want to just flat out say no and trying to strike a, a middle ground where there's a reasonable amount of field dirt brought in so you can have positive drainage on that lot, but not so much that, that it's just a total negative to the overall storage in the floodplain. Again, in, inside municipalities where there's a lot of small lots and a lot of redevelopment, I think they're going to have to have policies that, that go hard at trying to address that issue because we see existing homes that have been, been there for years become the victim. They were never the victim before, now they are, and it's all related to exactly what you described. Thank you. Any other questions?
I've got one, in reference to his scenario in the incorporated area. Could I bring as much dirt as I want and put on my property if I've got a drainage problem?
Well, I'm not.
Ultimately, it's going to affect somebody else, right?
Yeah.
But I, under this plan, I couldn't do that.
Well, first off, these ordinances are strictly for unincorporated, number one. So, it, depending on your municipality, so I'm not really in a position to speak about their ordinances, but a couple of things, in Calquashew Parish, if passed, again, we're kind of looking to limit that amount of field, take the approach I just described, so that we, we don't strictly take a stance where it has to be an alternate form of construction. I think that is the, the ultimate step, but you know, I think the, what we're looking at in a century is why they're, where they're at is because it's sort of a middle ground. And overall, when you start looking at and building regional detention and you do all these other things in concert, I think we can, we can afford a little bit of middle ground in our ordinances. We don't have to be so one-sided. So, again, the other part, the key thing for Calquashew Parish unincorporated is to understand the number of existing lots that are sort of two acres or less. It's really a small number in unincorporated area parish and anything else, any new lots getting created, you know, existing will be defined as whatever day these ordinances pass. Beyond that, as a new lot gets created, it'll follow the provisions of the rest of the ordinances, which will sort of negate the need for this, this set of ordinances that really deal with those existing lots that needs something to be built on. Any other questions?
In regards to that, Mr. Rainwright, we have various subdivisions that maybe 200 homes, it's, has 25 or 30 lots that's haven't been built on and they're starting to build on them now. What happens to these lots? Do they fall, are they grandfathered into the old one, do they fall into the new one?
Yeah. Number one, everything generally, generally speaking, there's a grandfather clause that matches some of the previous ordinance changes that are in there. So, in terms of new developments that are, that are in the planning stages and stuff, there is a window that would apply. But once the ordinances go into effect and there's, you know, one of the waivers for the, for the study was that if you're in a previous development, previously developed subdivision that has been mitigated. So, let me say this, the, some of the, 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 the study aspects and the requirements definitely would, they would be grandfathered in, but the impact fee would apply going forward on, on, on projects like that. Because really, the impact fee would apply to any new impervious surfaces being constructed, really anywhere that aren't mitigated. So, you have to begin taking responsibility, if you will, for every new square foot of impervious surface that goes into our watersheds and we have to start building regional detentions to mitigate for that.
That's reasonable. And I guess I was referring more to the building up of a lot. I mean, you've got subdivisions that they came in there and built lots up to a certain elevation of whatever before there was ever elevation needed.
Yeah.
And now you have people coming in that may be two foot, one foot, three foot below that on their lot.
Yeah.
And they're receiving all the water in that area.
Well, we would see, the, the ordinances for field mitigation and the limits would apply. I think they would apply to those lots. It wouldn't be made to do the study, but those ordinances ultimately would apply to a lot like that that limits some amount of field and again, and with all ordinances, you have to always sort of build in the ability to look at each case by case. For instance, exactly what you described, maybe every home out there is built to one fashion or style and it may not be practical to really go in for the last five or 10 homes like you described and all of a sudden have to change the style of that development so that it doesn't match with what's going on in there. I know y'all deal with that a lot. So, you always have to build in, into your ordinance drafts, the ability to, I call think for yourself and use common sense, but generally speaking, yeah, you want to try and put those, what you described into a position where they, we limit that amount of field without really overdoing it in terms of the rest of the development right around them too.
And the language of that requirement is in, will be in the ordinance.
Yeah, that's real, you know, again, it kind of, it's, it's a very long, complicated chapter to try and figure out and implement, but I think if you look at the intent, the intent would be that, that that lot would be limited as long as it doesn't overdo it for those particular homes in that particular scenario.
Correct. Okay.
Mr. Navarre.
Another situation. My daughter has lived in Moss Bluff. The lot next door to her house was a big, deep water run through it. Guy buys it, puts culverts in it, don't put big enough culverts, and now it's flooding in her house. And that, is there any way to make the guy dig that up and put bigger culverts?
So, all the existing problems like you described out there, we're sort of trying to manage those one by one. Every problem that we find, that's the other half of every day is, is trying to deal with problems. It'd be hard for me to answer with the amount of information you provided, that particular scenario, probably the best thing to do would be to look at that if we haven't already and try and understand what went on and who approved the culverts, who didn't, who needs to replace them, all those things. I could tell you, everybody on our staff and every other staff would want that to get fixed, whether we can or can't.
Because it's flooding, it's flooding houses on both sides of the lot.
So, it key to these ordinances though, is to try and avoid those scenarios where those sort of things are left out there in terms of the development somewhat undefined or loosely defined, basically. And so, to do a better job of pre-engineering these developments so that you don't have things like that happen. But we'll be glad to look at that particular case, you know, just, I need to get more information.
I had one, you said the drainage fees are going to be per square footage?
I'm sorry?
Of the structure? The drainage fees are going to be based on the square footage of the structure?
Yes, ma'am, the impervious area created. So, the goal with that is to really offset, to pay in form of a mitigation in lieu of on-site detention. What causes additional runoff is impervious surfaces, concrete, rooftops, you know, driveways and all the things that water can't seep through. So, natural ground, of course, is considered a pervious surface, so the water can So, natural ground, of course, is considered a pervious surface, so the water can get in, and so if you create, if you're creating 5,000 square foot of impervious surface with your new structure, then you would, 5,000 times 22 cents per square foot, that would be your, your amount. And like I say, it is a significant number, but compared to doing it on-site, it's, it's actually a good value.
Would that fee be in, in lieu of, of your on-site mitigation yourself?
For runoff, yeah.
So, i- if you did-
You wouldn't be asked to-
If you did zero impact, as far as your development, you did retention ponds, whatever, and you did zero impact, would you still have to tra- pay?
No, like I say, generally, the way the ordinance are work, work, or designed is, you're in an either-or situation, either you're going to be asked to do-
Right.
-zero-impact development and, and do on-site detention, runoff management plan-
Or you can pay the fee.
Or pay the fee. So, we kind of, there'll probably be some efforts to say, well, you know, I want to mitigate mine on-site, I can do it for less than your fee, but I think, and, and I don't think we would deny you trying, but I think the, the, the key there is have a very simple and consistent program that doesn't get off into all the, "Let me do it this way, let me do it that way," which is nice, but when you're trying to apply this parish-wide and sort of trying to avoid the, the circumstances where, "Why did he have to pay the fee and why did I not have to pay the fee?" All of that, and, and having to try and really share information about projects you shouldn't be really sharing. The easiest thing is to have a very flat fee, a very easy, simple system of, you're in a study portion of the program, or you pay the fee, and, you know, keep it as simple as possible.
Right. I did receive a call today, there was, there's a change in the sewage disposal standard. The section 26, 182, note C, sewer effluent discharge shall not be allowed to be discharged directly or indirectly through the RMP runoff mitigation measures. Disposal shall be provided in a manner that a fluid is introduced into the drainage system downstream of any measures, so that it does not conflict, increase, or impede the operations and maintenance of said measures. That, I would, the, the question was, will, will it still be allowed, treated to go into a parish ditch or drainage lateral? That would be downstream of any mitigation measure.
Absolutely, you got, you got to discharge it somewhere.
Correct.
So, but the, the goal and the intent of that is, is really twofold. Number one, if we're going to, first off, most of these detention ponds and, and field mitigation ponds end up being, you know, features that are attractive to these developments in other communities. They don't tuck the pond away in some ugly corner of the development and, and ignore it, they actually move it into the middle of development, make it an amenity, and they sell the homes around it for actually a higher market value. Well, the last thing you want to do after going through all that trouble is to run sewer effluent through that pond.
Sure.
So, if it's a wet pond, you don't want the, all homes in the subdivisions sewer discharge going through it, treated or not treated. So you want to bypass those features, and you really want to put it in at the first available spot downstream. Well, that's, like I say, easier said than done, it may mean that there has to be more, you know, community systems put in and things like that, but the reality is you, you don't want to create that feature-
Right.
-and then put sewer in it. So that's the reason why you have those, those types of discussions in the, so that's why you have to bring sewer into the drainage-
Sure.
...discussion.
Any other questions?
One more. The questions that we may have, where do we send them?
There's, there's also a website that you, Brian, help me with, is it Drainage? I'm trying to think of the emergent method website.
It's our website.
It's on the website. So the website has it, there's, there's a specific email address set up, emergent methods, who we're working with collects all those, they route them back to us, and then they help compile them and summarize them for us as well, so that's the number one place to do it.
Any other questions for Mr. Wainwright? Thank you, sir.
I thank y'all for y'all's time, I appreciate it.
We do have one blue card, Mr. Charlie Atherton. State your name and address for the record, I know you know.
Charlie Atherton, 122 Vine Street, Suffer, Louisiana. If you would, just, I wanted to pass this around for you to take a look at. Only got the, had the, the one copy there. What I want to try to do is just, is to put a little balance to, I mean, what, what Alan tells you is great, sounds good, but unless you actually own rural property, you, you may not understand the, the, the full implication and the impacts of what, what you're faced with. And the regs only apply outside the towns and the cities, is on the places that applies. Where of the opinion, before any new cost prohibitive drainage ordinances are forced on landowners, the main drainage project that jurors should be focused on is engineering a parish-wide drainage master plan to collect and pump rainwater from each of the parish's major watershed to the Gulf or to the Cameron Morris's without using the ship channel. Sea level rise and subsidence makes Calcasieu similar to New Orleans, and rainwater will eventually have to be pumped south without using the ship channel. You must first have an engineered, validated, long-range drainage plan, and then, secondly, you enact ordinances to support the plan. You should not enact new ordinances that have no proven engineering documentation to prove that the new ordinances are the long-term drainage solution. At the moment, all the new proposed ordinances are, are only expensive field good, do something to fool the public, and the unintended consequences may be worse, that there's no validation, no engineering validation has been presented at any of the public meetings that, that anybody's seen, that shows this is going to be part of the long-term solution. You got to have a major master plan, and then you develop the ordinances. You're in the middle of fixing to implement a bunch of ordinances, you have nothing to validate that it'll work. The last Army Corps drainage study basically told us, actually from this particular podium, that Calcasieu was too low in elevation and flat for gravity drainage to prevent flooding. If the parish doesn't have the money to bring the current parish road drainage system up to the standards it was designed for, what makes the jury think that individual landowners have the money to waste on expensive field good ordinances that have no studies or documentation to support or validate as being the long-range solution? The root cause of most of the flooding is caused by not having the legal authority to be able to install, clean, maintain all drainage structures crossing all railroads, water diversion canals, pipelines, infrastructure, or, or state highways. And basically, south of Highway 9, that's all titled influence. The tide controls how the, how the drainage is going to work there. So, a- again, you, you, do what now?
Talking with Mr. Gaff. Go ahead, go ahead, I was talking with Mr. Gaff.
Oh, okay. The, my understanding, too, is that the, when the, the, the current drainage ordinances was, was put on the website for people to review and look at was back in May, and there's, and like, uh, Mr. Wainwright pointed out, there's been some public interaction and discussion, but I'm not aware of any changes being made to, since May, to what was put on the website. My understanding, it's the same, so, so far, what the, the public input is kind of falling on deaf ears. But I, I think it's important that you understand, i- if you, if you don't own any property and you own, uh, two acres, 10 acres, five acres, you have to go back to the definitions that's in the subdivision ordinances. So, if you do own 10 acres and you sell or you donate one acre, you are now a subdivider, and these subdivision ordinances apply to you. Now, once, once they apply to you and, and you sell or donate a, a piece of that property, then automatically, my biggest heartburn is that most property owners don't even know this, this affects them. But you could have semi-40 acres in Carlos, and I, for some reason, separated, somebody, I donate one acre or whatever, then all the drainage lateral order, part of the ordinance comes into play, which means I could lose, possibly lose a big chunk of my property because if there's drainage latrals go through it, they tell you how big and wide you got to give them. So they, they're taking, they, they complain about landowners won't give people right-of-way through their property, but nobody looks at some of the horror stories in the past when people did allow them to go through, what they actually wound up with, and there's some real horror stories out there. So this is designed to where if you subdivide it, and all you did was sell or donate a piece, now all of a sudden, you're granting them this wide, you're, you're giving them a drainage right-of-way through your property. So, that's not right, that, that just by selling or dividing or giving, uh, when you can't focus a piece of, of your property, you're under the full weight of, of all of this, and it only implies to the unincorporated areas. My, my point being that this thing is much bigger than you can comprehend it, and, and I commend the, the parish for taking the effort to look at it, and I, and I thank Mr. Wainwright for providing a little time with me. The only thing we agreed to is I wasn't going, because of my age, I wasn't going to be around much longer, but I did appreciate his interest in, you know, in, in, uh, in having a discussion.
You've got one more minute.
All I, all I want you to, 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 to understand is that this thing is going to have unintended consequences. If for nothing else, the city of Suffer is probably going to grow all the way to the city of Benton, so that they don't have to comply with it. But I just ask that you keep an open mind when, when, as you review this, because the only people that were notified about these ordinances were the people that make money off of it, and thank God they were there. Thank God the developers and the engineers, they were there to raise the issue on behalf of, of the property owners. But the average property owner has no clue, he's now a subdivider, and he's now a developer. So, again, I, I very much appreciate your time and your patience for looking at-
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. I'd like to call, uh, Mr. Wainwright up to address.
Tell you what, can I ask you a quick question? Address, um, maybe, or?
Yes, sir, you can, Mr. Lue. Please state your name and address, sir.
Ralph Lue, Lake Charles, 1214, yes, Sarvee Street. Alliance for Positive Growth, Chairman of the Drainage Committee. I just want to say that, you know, that there is a lot of merit to some of the things that Mr. Atherton, Atherton is saying, but on, on another note, what I would like to address to you guys is, is that, um, the, our committee and the alliance has been working diligently with, uh, Mr. Wainwright and his staff for the last almost four months, discussing all these issues and some of the issues of drainage. It is, um, it is a, a major problem, it is a huge problem, and, um, a lot of engineering data has been put into it, a lot of engineering data has been extrapolated from years ago. I think that, um, um, these ordinances, they are in a working stage. Staff has taken in consideration recommendations from, that, that landowners and developers and contractors and people have, that have suggested, they have, and, and they have been very open to some of the recommendations that were made. And, um, I think that a lot of positive is going to come out of these ordinances. They won't be perfect, not everybody's ever going to be happy. The gentleman there that has his home flooded, I can appreciate what he's going through because my home's flooding now because somebody built something up around me, but those are issues that the parish is trying to overcome, and I just want to say, you know, to this group, that, uh, staff is working, and the comments that he made earlier about the input, they have taken that into consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Lue? Thank you, sir. Mr. Wainwright? I just wanted you to address specifically the, the, the changes, you know, and even though if they haven't been made to date, what, you know, are, are changes in, from feedback from the public?
Yeah. Well, first off, in the presentation, there were three slides that, I didn't go through them, but those were all changes related to, straight out of public comment, stakeholder comment. So, there have been plenty of changes, and, and, uh, it's a, it's a living document, I think Mr. Lue puts it, we're still writing the perfect document, maybe at the end of the day, it still won't be perfect. So there is a goal of improving it with every set of comments, but it is, you know, I, I think a little misleading suggestion, we have not made changes relative to comment, because I've written every word in that thing, and I know there's been plenty of changes based on the comments, every one that I can find. So with that, to have been changes. Uh, only other thing, if you, if you allow me to address a few of the other comments that were made, without getting into a, a big debate, is number one, this is very sound engineering, very well documented engineering practices. There's going to be consequences to trying to manage your drainage. It, it's no different than any other utility, uh, you need to have it. If drainage doesn't work, our community shuts down. You can experience that any day that we get three or four inches of rain in any one particular place, you can see how the community shuts down, so it's very important. Good news is, is there's track records all over the country to show you how to do it. So, these are not new concepts, these are not new at all. Detention is widespread, used throughout the country, will work in our area as well. Field mitigation as a concept and preserving your floodplain is a very proven concept. It always comes down to how you implement it in your area, how you right-size it. And I look forward to trying to make it in a way that we get the job done and we do not stymie growth and development, has never been the intent. But the real intent is what was described here earlier tonight, and I didn't have to say it, is someone, if you're that person that, that is in an existing home and the flooding is getting worse each and every day, you're the person that's calling us, asking for a solution. Now granted, this, this, tonight, talking about ordinances is not fancy, and it's not big million-dollar projects and, and digging ditches and magic tricks to the Gulf, it is a much more part of the long-range solution than projects will ever be, because all the projects in the world are going to help if we keep adding water to the bowl that we're in. All right, so we have to manage both ends of this equation. We have to manage how much water and dirt's going in our bowl, and then we need to have the best drainage system we can possibly afford to get it out of here. If that means pumps, so be it, but I think, you know, again, we just need to have the best drainage system we can afford, and I've already said, I think there needs to be a higher level of commitment to drainage projects, parish-wide, gravity drainage districts, all included. Only other thing I'll comment is, it's very disheartening to think that a municipality will back out of this, all right? Their waters leave those cities and they run right down into the unincorporated areas, right down through people who are going to experience the effects of that. So for me, if I heard my neighboring city saying that, "We don't care about you, we're going to dump as much water as we care to dump on you," I would be upset, and I am upset hearing that. Personally, it's very disheartening. All along, we have attempted to show all of our cards to the municipalities and attempted to help them understand their challenges as they relate to ours, and offer at any level of expertise we can, so they can get a grasp on their situation. But as I described, they have a different situation than Calcasieu Parish, unincorporated. They have a very small parcel properties, and they're redeveloping as fast as people can do it. So their challenge is different. Ours are big tracts, turning into homes, big, big box type stuff, right? So, two different problems linked at the middle, where street flooding and flash flooding is shutting down our economy, our commerce, and our community every day that it rains. Somebody probably had to stay on the day because of the rains we had, just couldn't move around. It's just a gridlock. I do not see that as a good long-term solution for our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Wainwright? I'd like Ms. Wallace.
I'm sorry, just if I could clarify one point related to Mr. Atherton's comments. He is correct that our ordinance does contain language where if someone owns 40 acres and they cut out an acre for a family member, yes, our ordinance does apply, but that's how it is today and that's how it has been for years. And in my opinion, he presented it as such that what we're discussing tonight as amendments would do that, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone was clear that we've had a subdivision ordinance around since about 1974 and I don't really think that that application has changed in that time.
I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Wainwright for all your hard work. I know, like Mr. Lewing said, it's a huge monumental task to tackle and I would not want your job the last few minutes. But any other questions or comments regarding item 12? If not, we'll move on. Any other comments from the staff?
I think that you may need to vote to receive the report.
It's technicality, you can. Since the motion was made.
Okay. All right.
And it's just to receive the report.
Just to receive the report. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Report is received. Item 13, advised that the police jury took the following action on June 22, 2017 with reference to the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board from the June 20, 2017 meeting. Applicant Murray at Highway 171, Planning and Zoning Board, that was actually withdrawn. Applicant Seal, location Phillips Road, Planning and Zoning Board passed and the police jury upheld. Applicant Grangers at Highway 3059, Planning and Zoning Board passed and the police jury upheld. Applicant Milburn at Simon LeBlu, that was withdrawn. Applicant Richard at Johnny Jones, Planning and Zoning Board passed, police jury upheld. And applicant Gulf Mobile Home Park at Red Davis, Planning and Zoning Board passed and the police jury upheld. I would like to advise that the next regularly scheduled Planning and Zoning meeting will be held Tuesday, August 22, 2017 in the police jury meeting room. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Need a second. So we've got a motion by Ms. Cobb and a second by Mr. Navarre. We are adjourned.